Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the public hearing to order. First of all, I have a statement to read, which I do at the beginning of every public hearing. This council meeting is being convened in order to hear, to hold, public hearings on land use matters. The public and anyone who believes their interest in property is affected by the agenda items may speak or present written submissions to council. Everyone will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this hearing. No one should feel discouraged from making their views known. Those of you who wish to speak or have registered with the city clerk should, after being recognized by the chair, begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you have provided a written submission, please make this known at the beginning. All written submissions will be retained by the city clerk and will form part of the record of the hearing. Each speaker may address the hearing a maximum of twice. The length of your first presentation will be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes. Your comments must be relevant and not obstruct the hearing. Any additional presentation which must be on new information will be limited to three minutes. Members of council may ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the function of council members during a public hearing is to listen to the views of the public, not to debate the merits of matters with citizens. Any debate by members of council will occur at the subsequent vote. The order of proceedings for each item will normally be as follows. First of all, the city clerk will briefly describe the matter under consideration. Then the applicant or their agent will be invited to make a brief presentation of up to 10 minutes. Then the city clerk will identify any written submissions that have been received. Oral submissions will be heard, and any further written submissions, if any, will be received. And finally, the hearing will be closed and matters may be considered. Please note that delegations must present in a respectful manner without interference or comment from the audience. City council is committed to ensuring a safe and respectful environment and supports the right of the community to bring comments forward. Please observe these rules, and if you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. So, matter of course, first item.
Thank you, worship. First item is Richmond zoning by law 8500, amendment by law 10424, RZ 21941591. Location is 12120 number 5 road. Applicant is 1243059 BC Limited. And the purpose is to rezone the subject property from agricultural AG1 to light industrial IL to permit development of two industrial buildings. First reading was July 10th, 2023.
Anyway, so is the applicant here on this item this evening? Okay, did you want to make a presentation or just await questions? Okidok. Any written submissions on this item?
None, your worship.
All right, is there anybody here who wishes to address council on this item this evening? Anyone? Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Discussion on that. All those in favor? Any opposed that is carried? Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is Richmond zoning by law 8500, amendment by law 10478, RZ 23018081. Location is 4831 Stevenson Highway. The applicant is Anthony Boni, Boni Madison Architects, and the purpose is to create the low-rise rental apartment ZLR 48, Stevenson Highway Stevenson, and to rezone the subject property from the single detached RS1E zone to the low-rise rental ZLR 48 Stevenson Highway Zone to permit the development of a three-story, 25-unit affordable rental housing building with access from Stevenson Highway. First reading was July 24th, 2023.
Just to emphasize, this one is the property at Railway and Stevenson. So, is the applicant here tonight? Did you wish to make a presentation or just await questions?
Lots of questions.
Okay. Written submissions, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, worship. There are three letters of support from Mr. Bob King, from the Gilmore Park United Church, and from Miss Ann Wicks.
All right, does anybody wish to address us on this item on the agenda this evening? Okay, so I'm seeing, please come forward. And then there was a couple over here. Okay, we'll go to the person in the second row. Can't remember your name.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Linda Barnes. I live at 4551 Gary Street in Richmond, Stevenson. I'm here to support the item that you're addressing tonight, and I believe that it is something that is extremely needed here in Richmond, and particularly in the Stevenson area. I feel that it's a good location where it is. It's close to transit, it's close to Stevenson, which has a lot of amenities, and I think it's a good spot. I do have one question, though. It's my understanding that Turning Point, which is the organization that is slated to operate this facility, also has several other facilities in Richmond. And I guess my question to you and/or to staff is, have we had any major concerns with any of the recovery homes that are operated by Turning Point in Richmond?
Can staff answer this question? Turn that off. Because I think this is, while it's Turning Point, I think it's a new enterprise. But who can speak to that? Mr. Craig?
Thank you, your worship. Staff were unaware of any issues with any facilities operated by Turning Point in the city of Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think that that, although this may be a new enterprise, talks to the integrity of Turning Point as an operator. And it's my understanding, when I was sitting in the chairs where you guys are now, that the facilities that they operated actually, once they were in place, the neighbors really appreciated having them there, their staff there. And so I believe that this will be just as well operated. Thank you.
All right, councillor Day, you have a question.
Coming forward, Ms. Barnes, as a retired councillor, you've been in these chairs, you know how this is. Can you speak to how good or easy or hard or simple it is to open up an affordable housing complex as a ex-councillor?
Yes, I remember distinctly, it's not easy. You know, there's a lot of questions and a lot of concern, and the neighbors particularly need to be helped to understand that this is a facility that will help. We've all seen either firsthand or pictures of the downside or downtown east side, and it scares many people. And to prevent places like that, it's incumbent upon places like Richmond and the rest of the municipalities and cities around it to serve their own people, so that your own people are here and looked after, and the migration to a place like the downtown east side doesn't happen.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, and the lady in the next, yes, you with your hand up? Please come on, come forward. And who else would like to speak? So I see a person right down here in the middle, and I see a hand up in the back.
Is it this one?
Yes.
Does it matter? Doesn't matter?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Ann Wicks, and I did do a written submission, but I did want to speak. I acknowledge that I live and work on the traditional and unceded territory. Yes?
Just hang on a sec. What is the issue?
Yes? Okay. I acknowledge that I live and work on the traditional and unceded territory of the Hunkamenum speaking people of the Musqueam Nation. My municipal address of residence is 10171 Holly Mount Drive in Richmond. Our home is located 700 meters from the proposed housing development in the subdivision east of Railway Avenue. We have lived here since 1980 and have raised our children here. Today, I speak in favor of the proposed affordable housing project, and I urge city council to move forward in providing much-needed housing for women and children amidst this extremely challenging housing market. And I'm grateful to the team of collaborators who have brought this housing project forward for approval by the city. We know that women and children of limited financial means need stable and affordable housing to allow them to access essential supports, to find education and employment, to thrive and to develop healthy and meaningful relationships with welcoming neighbors. My experience of Richmond over the past 40 years plus years is that we are a welcoming community. We, as a family, our family, have witnessed neighbors welcoming and supporting one another over these many years. Having myself grown up in a family nurtured by a single mother, I understand from experience how important it is to have stable housing and to have easy access to schools, transit, and green space, all in a safe, stable neighborhood. It is essential for the health and the thriving of all members of the family. I understand from experience how essential the welcome and friendship of neighbors is in day-to-day life growing up. I am also a member of the Railway Community Garden, located north of the proposed housing development. I rent a 200-square-foot plot near Holly Mount Gate, a five-minute walk from my home. I hope that the new tenants in this housing development, mothers and their children, will feel welcome to wander through the gardens and to learn from our neighbor gardeners how their food is grown. This has the potential for mutually meaningful relationships to develop between the residents and the gardeners, and this is already happening in the neighborhood. I would like to briefly respond to some of the objections which have previously been raised about this housing development. One is the noise of recycling and garbage trucks. Don't we all have recycling and garbage trucks coming by our homes once every one or maybe two weeks? This is a necessary service for city dwellers. Another objection has been the loss of view. I find this objection puzzling. What is the view that is being lost? The parking availability at O'Hare's Pub? The traffic at Stevenson and Railway, a busy urban intersection? Yes, it is a green space at the moment, this lot, because I drove by yesterday, and yes, the people in the two- and three-story townhouses, they have a nice little green space to look at. But this property, as far as I know, has been slated for residential development for some time. Another objection is a three-story building spoken by people who live in a three-story townhouse nearby? This also, in my view, is a puzzling objection. The fourth and final objection that I've heard in previous meetings is concerns that have been voiced about who the residents in the new housing will be. I have lived and worked with people who struggle daily with various challenges, mental, physical, or otherwise. Some are my family members. These women who are going to rent here are real people, seeking to make a meaningful and flourishing life for themselves and their children. They are entitled to our understanding and compassion, not our judgment. In conclusion, I urge our city council to move forward with this project. I welcome these new community members to our neighborhood, and I hope that my fellow neighbors will do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. No, no, let's get it straight right now. We're not going to have any applause in here. This is not a theater. This is a very serious deliberation by a city council, and this is very serious to many people. So, no applause. Thank you very much. The lady in the middle, please come forward, then the person up top. Who wants to go after the person up top? Okay? The gentleman with his hand up. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ainsley Cook. I live at 4800 Trimeran Drive, and I would just like to start by saying that I'm very humbled to be here today on the unceded, traditional ancestral territories of the Musqueam people, and very, very grateful for that. I didn't prepare anything, but I felt really strongly to be here today. I'm a neighbor of the site, and I have written in to the paper and to council already. And similar to what the speaker was saying before, I am looking very, very forward to welcoming these families and individuals to our community. It is greatly, greatly needed in a city such as Richmond, which has almost zero vacancy rate. No one can afford rents, let alone buying homes. I work in social services, I'm a social worker, and I have worked in Richmond as well as Vancouver for many, many years, primarily with women. Primarily with women who have not had the opportunity to parent their children, often for reasons that are systemic in nature, and do not have access to safe and affordable housing. And I also have witnessed firsthand the effect that safe, affordable housing has on families. And I'm wearing a shirt today that says, "Safe, affordable housing and a livable income are medicine," and this is what we need to offer to our community members to thrive as families. And I won't take up any more of your time, but I would just like to say, just to share something, that when we received, because we're right there, just a couple hundred meters from the proposed site, the little postcards in the mail from the city a number of months ago. My children, when we got in the door and we saw the little postcard from the mail, they exclaimed, they're 11, they're almost 11 and 8, "How wonderful that more people are getting housing, and they're going to live right by us." And that is the kind of message that I would like all my neighbors to be, you know, reveling in and supporting and just really encouraging people who might not have as much privilege as many of us here in this room. And I think that we need more of that, and that is a really simple thing that we can do. I understand people have some fears about the unknown and that things can be scary, but I wish to assure folks that people who are given opportunities, it is really amazing to see how they flourish and how lives can be absolutely changed and things can turn around. And we need to keep moms and kids together and not let systemic barriers and systemic racism and institutional barriers affect people's lives and transitions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At the back, and then this gentleman leaning against the post. Who would like to be after him? Okay, we'll go to the lady with your hand up.
Hello. I didn't start preparing until I was sitting back there. My name is Sarah Stern. I'm here to give a voice and a face to, for all the mothers that have had to use and live in subsidized housing, and their children, and those that need it. So I've lived here for five years now, but before that, I had to, excuse me if I get emotional, I had to flee a domestic violence situation. And gone are the days when a woman and her children can enter a domestic violence shelter and in less than 30 days be put at the top of BC Housing's list. That doesn't happen anymore. It's very rare. And so what happened with us five years ago is that we had to leave, and I was living out near Whistler. And we found a place in a domestic violence shelter, and, sorry, just a little bit of backstory. I am university educated. I used to own my own business, my own home, back in Alberta, but I became dependent for health reasons on my partner, who then later became abusive and violent. So I just wanted to dispel the myth that some people have, or the way that some people might think that the average person or the average mom might look, or the type of person that they might be, or their background or their education, because it can happen to anybody, because it happened to me. So we were in a shelter, they couldn't find a place, so then we had to go into an actual homeless shelter. There's very few homeless shelters, for those of you that know, that take women and their children. We went to a place in New West that also took people who were, and I don't judge at all, battling drug addiction. It was a very low-barrier shelter, but it was scary for my children. Thankfully, Tikkva Housing, because I'm Jewish, I was able to get into Tikkva Housing. They'd only been opened for a year here across the street in the Stories Building. That presented its own problems, because there were some issues with residents when we moved in, but we were, it was like winning the lottery, because we had a place where we could deal with the mental health effects of dealing with that situation, and also to stabilize. And my children flourished, and so did I. And even though Richmond is literally the last place I ever thought that I would end up, I absolutely love it here. I work here. I now work in mental health, and I also work with the city of Richmond to drop in sessions at the second Thursday of every month at the Brick House Library to help other people navigate resources here in a way that was very different than I had to when I first moved here. But none of that, none of what I've been able to accomplish, none of the connections, my children, who are now all adults, are now all flourishing, and that's because we were able to come to Richmond, where all the supports are here, it's just the housing isn't here. And so I just wanted to put a face to all the faceless people out there who might need that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, gentleman standing, and then that person. Who would like to be after that person standing up? Sorry, I see a hand over there. Okay, that'll be you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vinnie. I live just off Railway Avenue and Stevenson Highway at a Schonner Court. I am here to provide my unwavering support for the proposed project. Sorry, this is my first time speaking, so I'm, you know, a little bit nervous. First of all, I will just note that this project is part, it fits the official community plan, and it requires no meaningful adjustments to our community's infrastructure. So on that point alone, that's a huge plus already to the project, which is why when I was reviewing the agenda items, I was a little bit taken aback by the sheer volume of opposition to the project. I don't need to dwell too specifically on the benefits that it will, that the project will yield to its residents, as prayer speakers have spoken. I will perhaps draw attention as to the current housing situation that we currently find ourselves in, and why, from a high-level perspective, why it's so necessary. So I've looked up statistics about median income levels for residents in our city. In the 2021 census, estimates that it's at $78,500. The median home value in the city of Richmond has far surpassed $1 million. It is currently, given the real estate board rate of Vancouver, it sits at almost $1,200,000. And that's counting all homes. If we are counting detached homes, which make up the vast majority of Stevenson's landmass, that's over $2 million. So we're already at a point where the average household cannot possibly hope to afford a home in our city. You know, people who may work all of their lives, it's not even a matter of, you know, not, you know, eating avocado or drinking Starbucks, you know, it's literally physically impossible. And this speaks very strongly to me. I am fortunate that I am able to live with my family and not face the absolute savage housing market that my generation currently has shot up with. However, in the course of my work, I work as a health professional on the clerical side. I have seen countless friends and coworkers who can, who cannot make Richmond or anywhere else in the Lower Mainland work financially. And I'm not even talking about people who would be eligible for this project. I'm talking about mid-career, white-collar, college-educated professionals who earn by themselves at least the median income of the city. And anyone who's trying, you know, any of them who are trying to raise a family, if they don't have prior housing provided by family or, you know, even a loan by their family, they literally cannot make it work here in Richmond or within its vicinities. Most of the people I've known have moved out of the province entirely, because unfortunately, it's not just Lower Mainland nowadays, it's many of our cities in our province. And again, I'm talking about people who are average or even a little bit better. So imagine the situation that people, you know, who are earning perhaps, you know, even less than that, you know, the 30, 40,000 range, they literally cannot afford to live without substantial help from the government or from charities or any nonprofit society. And it's a truly tragic situation that we're in nowadays, which, and it's really necessary for us to start having more projects like this one that allows people who would otherwise be, you know, as some people might abbreviate SOL, can at the very least, you know, have a home, you know, in a relatively well-serviced and, you know, beautiful, really, neighborhood, and get a, you know, especially given the demographic that it's targeting, single parents, that, you know, they can at least have an opportunity to raise children, which unfortunately, you know, even of my many well-earning people that I know are unable to do so in the city. So again, I will reiterate that I am someone from the community who unwavering supports this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Person up there, and then the person over here. Who would like to go after that? Okay?
Hello. So sitting here listening to what everyone has to say. It sounds like a common theme is that our community needs to do better. But I think that that needs to start with the city doing a little better for us. The way this project was handled made it really difficult to get behind it and support it. When it was initially announced to the neighborhood, key details were missing, and in fact, to many of my neighbors, it felt like a lot of those key details were being purposely hidden or purposely foggy. We found out that the city had the intention of offering this housing for women and children several days later via the local paper. And I personally had additional questions, that it took several emails to the city to get answered, some of which never got answered, all while up against the clock with only short amount of time for public comment. The trickle stream of information led to the community kind of pitting against each other. You're either for the project, or you're a NIMBY who hates women and children, and I don't think that's the case at all. I know most of my neighbors, and they're all very big-hearted, kind people. And I think that one of the best things that we can do for our community is to show up, ask questions, and demand answers. So I'm totally for using the space on the corner of Stevenson and Railway to provide affordable housing for our community, but with so many details that have never been really answered to my satisfaction, I'm still unsure of whether or not I can be for this particular project. And it's a shame, because I believe that this should be an easy project, or at least an easier project, for people in our community to come together and support. And I feel like we have been denied the chance to come together as a community, and instead it created the perfect situation for misinformation, suspicion, and frustration to grow. So my hope is that as this project goes forward, we will all take this as a lesson to ask more questions, and I hope that the city will lead the way by getting the public involved at an earlier stage, being more transparent into their plans, and being active listeners, so that we can do more than just build affordable housing, that we can create a supportive, sustainable, affordable community. Thanks. that we can create a supportive, sustainable, affordable community. Thanks.
Hang on, hang on. Uh, I've got a couple of questions. Counselor Galanders.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, you didn't state your name.
Oh, Heidi Anderson.
Hi, thank you for coming to speak and um, I do have a question for you. Um, in a neighborhood, when a new um house is going up or if a a single-family home next to you is going to get rezoned to um two smaller homes, do you feel that it's your right to know who's going to be living there and what their income levels are?
Well, some of my questions weren't, what are the, I mean, that's making a big assumption about who I am as a person.
This is a good question.
So, no. Some of my questions were, is this long-term or short-term housing? Which I think in your neighborhood, if someone was building a project next door to you, you would want to know, are these neighbors who are coming for a long time or are they coming for a short time? So that was something that was not really clear in the initial proposal.
Do you ever know how long your neighbors are going to stay living next to you? I mean, people buy and sell.
Well, unless your house is, or the building next door is licensed as a hotel or an Airbnb, you can generally know that it's long-term. Isn't that why we have licenses for Airbnbs so that we're not having short-term housing?
No, but I'm just saying people can move in and then they can move out.
Absolutely, but the intention.
It's really not anybody's business, is it?
You can only ask questions, please.
I formed it as a question.
All right, Counselor Day.
Well, thank you very much for coming forward and I'm glad that you live in the neighborhood. And the fact that you still have questions does concern me. Uh, it is long-term, just to be clear. Is there any other questions you need answers for?
Um, not at this point. I think earlier, though, it would have helped um, the entire neighborhood, though, come together to know what was being built there because it was not very clear to us. And that was where the situation came up where there was misinformation being spread. So we're just hoping, well, my hope is that this comes together as an opportunity for everyone to learn so that these projects can be put forward in a way that everyone can get on board, or you'll never get everyone on board. But people who are maybe in the middle and unsure, they have the information they need to make a decision.
Well, right you are. Thank you.
Um, just before you go, I'll, I'll just further note, this is part of a federal, this, this program is part of a federal program called the Rapid Housing Initiative. And we, at the initial stages of this, we were constrained from being able to share all the details of the situation uh because of the agreement with the federal government. There were certain timing restrictions on it. And ultimately, we've come to a rezoning uh for the property and that's what we're talking about, which is really land use, appropriate land use. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, the person here.
Good evening. My name is Marion Smith. I live at six-five Azaromi Flower Drive. I was going to be really brief. I was just going to say, if you give people housing, you'll give them hope. And once they have hope, then they can dream and they can plan and they have futures. Just think of the difference that will make for these kids and these moms. They will have hope if, once they get this housing. But I'll, given the previous speaker, I'll just say that there's a lot of information on the city's website. I'm not happy with the new website, but um, it's hard to find. It takes a long time to load that document. And I know I've loaded it a few times. And once you're in that document, it's hard to s- to move around in it. So perhaps that would help people the, for the next projects if, if you had somebody take a look at that. So um, once again, please vote for this. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Evan Dunphy. Uh, I hope you all had a wonderful summer and welcome back. Um, I'm speaking tonight in favor of this project. Um, I'm really heartened to be in a room tonight where so many people also spoke out in favor of it. I've sat in this room uh speaking in favor of rental housing before where I was the only person with a hundred angry neighbors showing up against it. Um, so I'm really happy to see the strength in numbers that we have and and uh the community coming together because this is a very privileged position for us to be in to to take time out of our, out of our Tuesday evenings uh to come and speak. So um, that that was really, really great to see and I really appreciate that. Um, I can't put into words why I support this project better than what you've already heard. Um, so I want to speak just a little bit towards the land use of it and where I still believe some improvements can be made. We don't have a ton of parking here. People are going to be moving on foot or by bike, but they don't have direct access to the railway greenway. Um, I think that is such a short-sighted move. I think giving access directly to the greenway would make a lot of sense instead of forcing people out onto Stevenson Highway uh to then, you know, walk up, turn, turn, and to get, to access the greenway. Just put in a gate, let them access the greenway, let them take their bikes out there, hop on the greenway and go. Um, to me, that's a no-brainer. Um, and then I'm just worried about the bike parking. Uh, one of the bike parking structures is a double-heated contraption that uh, you know, if you have kids' bikes, you're not going to get the kids' bikes up there. The kids aren't going to be able to get them down. Looking at the design of the bike room, it doesn't look like there's enough of a turning radius to get uh anything larger than a standard-sized bike. We're seeing the proliferation of electric bikes, cargo bikes, tricycles, um, you name it, all sorts of different active mobility devices that um, I'm afraid that some of them just won't fit in the confined space for that. So um, at the development permit stage, I would love to see some redesign of the bike room to give a little bit more space to consider different types of active mobility that we're seeing grow. Um, but over on top of everything else, I I just, I do fully support this project and I've been really grateful to see the support from council up until this point and I hope you continue to support tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Uh, so with that, is there, is there anybody wanting to speak for a second time on new information? Stressing that it has to be new information. All right, may have a motion.
Second and third.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Counselor Day.
Yeah. I'll be supporting this proposal because the need for it is undeniable. Um, women and children are in desperate need of housing along with many other people. But it's very important that we push this forward and uh, and I understand and I've heard loud and clear that there could have been better communication. And uh, I know I would be taking that to heart, making sure that in future developments, we do a better job of answering the questions uh that people have when something new like this has come up. I think the benefit to the community is significant. Um, you know, the schools are not overcrowded in this area, so that will help the local schools. And um, because basically the people who live here will be marginalized, they won't have the kind of money to have cars. They'll be very happy to be on the railway corridor and have access to uh transportation. So I will be supporting this.
Counselor Dunphy.
Yeah, thank you, Worship. Uh, I'll be supporting this as well without uh any qualms whatsoever. Uh, I think we've got to look at what we're doing here and these are homes for women and children. And these are our people. You know, I heard some labels earlier put out tonight. There are no labels, there are people. These are our mothers or sisters, our daughters that are looking for housing. And we want to give the, we can't measure the benefits. We're going to give these um, these opportunities in these twenty-five units to these people that are are coming. And I think uh, I certainly wish we could do more, we could do it faster. And obviously, um, I, the process isn't uh, isn't perfect. But the partnership that we have with federal government didn't allow us to do that. But more importantly, I think we have to look at what the objective is here and um, we have to continue um, um, moving along in that way. I remember the time, and for those that can remember, when we did, started and we voted for the Nova House. I think uh Mayor Brody will remember that, for those of you remember, uh, for a house for uh women um, with domestic violence and um, how we brought that in. And since then, we haven't done anything in that area. And we've got to do more in that area. In terms of the, the carrier and the proprietor of it, it's a new venture. Um, you know, I I see in some of the papers that uh, people are being labeled. And we cannot label people, they are people, okay? Whatever their background, whatever it is, uh, we don't label you and we don't label them. And I really resent when I hear people uh, uh, being labeled in it, um, in terms of it. Um, I don't know, anybody could not be in favor of this particular uh development and many more to come in the community, as long as I'm on council and the council here is supportive of it, providing people uh with those opportunities because we're not going to be able to measure the benefits to those individuals, uh, the women and the children, uh, to have that. You heard from some of the delegation and uh they've uh put this. So without question, uh, Your Worship, I'll supporting it. Uh, we have not had issues. You know, we've got the Stories over there, was mentioned, uh, by woman up here. We've got the Kiwanis, we've got Beckwith. We have a number of examples that are the envy of Canada to have these, this kind of housing. And now I'm hoping that we can have one more at Railway and Stevenson. Thank you, Worship, and I'll be supporting it no end.
Counselor Hobbs.
Thank you through the chair. I'll be supporting uh what's before us right now, as I have every step along the way. And I'd just like to make a couple of points. Uh, we all know and have heard that we're in a housing crisis in Canada, B.C., Metro Vancouver. Uh, it is a crisis at all levels and the solutions are not going to appear overnight. So this is one incremental step that helps address the need for a very small number of people who are a very vulnerable group. It's an appropriate use of the land that is there, so land-use-wise, it all fits. And I think as we work our way through different projects and housing needs, it's just important for us all to take a step back and just think of how we can move forward in a meaningful, thoughtful, compassionate way that tries to address the needs of the greatest number of people. This is a small project, it'll make a small incremental step and uh, I'm very happy to be supporting it. And I think it'll work out because the city is very committed, as Turning Point is, to making this a success story. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, Counselor I.
Yes, Worship. I will be in support of this project because there's every reason to support it. Uh, if it's the OCP, uh, it's a very much needed kind of housing uh for a special group of women and children. And we know that it's going to be operated by a very reputable uh organization. It's very unfortunate that uh, perhaps in the process, uh, we have not done enough to give out uh timely and um accurate information that uh, we, we saw some of the misunderstanding in the community and got the, some of the people divided. I think this is very, very unfortunate. And I grieve the speaker that we should learn from this and next time we're going to do it better. But in particular, I want to thank the few people who came here today to share their personal experience, either as the person who received some kind of help or the people who uh give out the help, the support of the people who are in it. I think your sharing, your, your uh experience give weight to support this program. And I think this is very um noble for you to take the courage to share your personal story with us. With that, I thank you.
All right, uh, with that, I'm going to call the question then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. So that is carried. Um, Mr. Clark, next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Worship. Item number three is Official Community Plan Bylaw nine thousand, Amendment Bylaw one zero four seven.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Those people who are leaving, of course, you may leave, but please do so quietly because we are carrying on with our meeting. And thank you for coming. So just give it a minute. Okay, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, item number three, uh, Official Community Plan Bylaw nine thousand, Amendment Bylaw one zero four seven nine, and Richmond Zoning Bylaw eighty-five hundred, Amendment Bylaw one zero four eight zero, RZ two one nine three six zero four six. Uh, location is eight five two zero, eight five four zero and eight five six zero Railway Avenue. The applicant is Winston Chong Architect, Inc. And the purpose of the OCP designation amendment is to change the subject site's designation from neighborhood residential to apartment residential. And the purpose of the zoning amendment is to create the low-rise rental apartment ZLR four seven, Railway Avenue, Blundell Zone, and to rezone the subject site from single-detached RS one E to low-rise rental apartment ZLR four seven, Railway Avenue, Blundell, to allow a one-hundred percent rental seniors' housing development consisting of a fifty-eight unit, four-story building with vehicle access from where Railway Avenue. First reading was July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here this evening or the representative? Did you wish to make a presentation or just await questions?
Questions?
Just.
Or do you want us to explain what it is?
Well, to be honest, uh, I've seen the correspondence and I think there are a number of questions that are going to be asked. So why don't you come on down and, and address them? So if you could take a seat and I've asked that you introduce yourself. I think you know the kind of questions I'm talking about. There was uh shadowing, traffic, uh, height, uh, neighborhood impacts, et cetera.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Uh, my name is Cindy Chen. I'm the applicant representing S.D. Railway Homes. Uh, we're proposing here to uh rezone the land on A five two zero to eight five six zero railway uh to a fifty-eight unit uh senior rental house, affordable rental housing. And uh, it will be managed by a uh, a known nonprofit organization, Kiwanis Senior Citizens Housing Society in Richmond. And they have a track record of managing senior affordable housing in Richmond for over fifty years. And uh, uh, what we're proposing here, we, we know that there are a number of positions regarding the height, the size, the volume, the form of the building. I'm going to address a few of them. Uh, number one, the height of the building. Um, although we're proposing a four-story building here, um, the total height of the building is only one or two feet higher than the townhouse next door. So we're, we're not building something uh much higher than what we have in the neighborhood. And also, uh, regarding the form, um, the townhouse project next to us has a uh two-story building only twenty feet away from the, the fence of our back neighbors on the east. And for our uh project, we have um not only the twenty-feet normal setback, but also we have a rooftop garden which will separate the building from the neighbor for another forty to forty-two feet. Uh, rather than having a two-story building there, they're going to see a one-story rooftop uh garden, which is kind of nice. Um, regarding the density, uh, we, we're building fifty-eight units, but they, these are for seniors. And a lot of the seniors, based on our experience with the Kiwanis Towers uh near Richmond Center, the uh, uh, density ratio will be about one-point-three-five uh persons per unit, uh, which means when we have fifty-eight units, we're going to have about eighty, maybe eighty-five seniors living there. A lot of them could be singles, widows. And these are relatively healthy people who can live independently without assistance. And the a- average age is about sixty-plus, uh, sorry, the age is sixty-plus, but the average currently living in Kiwanis Towers is about uh seventy-five. Uh, and these are very um nice, easy-going people. Um, they don't create much noise because they don't party. Uh, they don't invite a lot of friends or uh visitors to their houses. Um, so they're going to keep the place quiet and nice. Uh, in fact, if, if there are people who, who have any knowledge about the Kiwanis Towers, um, it's one of the best-managed towers, uh, affordable housing uh projects in Richmond. And uh, uh, I think the neighbors uh right next to us welcome the project. Um, they know that we don't create any problems, any troubles. Um, regarding the traffic, we've done a, a very thorough study in the past two years. And uh, most of the seniors that will live there do not drive. Um, so um, there will be probably about the same number of vehicles uh comparing to a townhouse project next to us. And uh, wh- when there are um concerns about whether this is a suitable site for seniors, um, we, we've done some study. It's a walking distance, fifteen minutes to Seafair, to uh Blundell Center. It's a three-minute drive to most um amenities, including banks, coffee shops, Centre. It's a three minute drive to most amenities, including banks, coffee shops, stores, restaurants. We have bus routes right in front of Railway, seven minute northbound to Mineral Centre, 11 minutes to Brick House Sky Train Station, 12 minutes to Stevenson. It's actually quite convenient for seniors. And there is a railway greenway, which is just right across from the property. It's nicely paved and accessible. It's got a trail that seniors can either walk or bike. So we find that to be a pretty nice location. Concerning the the shadow, as I said, the total volume of the building is not much bigger than a townhouse complex. So we really don't see a problem there. So that's that's a very brief introduction about the project itself, but I welcome questions from the audience. Maybe our architect, Doug Johnson, he's going to add a few words.
The the actual architect is Winston Chong and he got tied up in coming back from from Ontario. So I'm just filling in with him. I think there were just a couple of other things which did come up. One was on the lighting of the building. The interior lighting is basically going to be LED and and will be carefully maintained and monitored. And also, these folks generally aren't up late at night. Spill out from the building is probably not going to be an issue at all. The exterior lighting, it's typically done with night sky policies, which is means you're you're downlighting your pathways and things like that. So that the light is not going to be spilling up and interfering with the with the night sky.
I think, oh, there was a question on the noise of construction. We'd be certainly adhering to noise bylaws of the city of Richmond. This project is going to be wood frame. It is not over a parkade, so that the construction period will be certainly a lot less than a typical apartment building because of that.
All right, we've got a couple of questions. Why don't we go to them?
Sure.
Counselor Day?
Thank you very much, Mayor Brad Cody. Thank you for your presentation. That certainly answers a lot of the questions. Can you speak to the need for housing for seniors?
Well, we all know that we have a housing crisis, but for seniors is especially important. I'm also a volunteer with the Kiwanis Senior Citizens Housing Society, and we manage the two Kiwanis Towers nearby. Every year we hear from, if we were to open for application, we would hear from at least 150 seniors railway within the first week or two. And we know we're far from being able to accommodate all of them. So whenever we have a chance to build more, we would like to.
Okay. And so the design of the building is that it's only going to be one story on the east side, which is a side that faces the houses. And then there's going to be a community garden on top of that one story. Would it be possible to put privacy screens along the east side so that the people in the complex can enjoy privacy and the people in the houses can enjoy privacy?
The answer to that is yes. And a lot of that will be actually developed during the development permit process. This is for the rezoning tonight that we're addressing.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Glaner.
Thank you for your presentation. One thing that, is my mic on? Oh, I'm not on. One thing that I heard somebody say, somebody wrote in asking that there was a development plan for a different type of rental housing originally. And then that plan was pulled and then this current plan came forward. I think there was one for low income housing and it got changed to senior housing. I was just wondering if you could speak to what the prompted the change in the development.
Well, since.
With respect, we just have to deal with what's in front of us and assess it on its merits.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. Stick around because there's likely to be some more questions at some point.
Here or out there?
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to speak to us on this item on the agenda? Okay, we'll go one, two, three. And then we'll get to you guys.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Whalen and I'm a longtime resident of Richmond. I'm here on behalf of the Richmond Poverty Reduction Coalition tonight to express our full support for this development proposal for seniors. The R P R C is a coalition of Richmond residents and agencies working together to reduce poverty and the impacts of poverty with research, projects and public education. Along with numerous individual members of our coalition, we have 12 local Richmond organizations that service the our most vulnerable in in the city. Collectively, the R P R C represents thousands of low income Richmond residents receiving vital services from Richmond agencies. This proposal for 100% rental seniors housing development that will consist of 58 units with one half of them low end market rental or LEMER units, and in total, a mixture of studios and ones in two bedrooms. It is very good news for for Richmond and for our Richmond seniors, especially those seniors who are at risk of homelessness. I just wanted to fill you in, many of our members participate in the Richmond homeless connect, which is also done all through Metro Vancouver. The last one was done in 2023. We don't have those reports yet, but I've given you a link to the 2020 homeless count. And I'll just read a little bit about that. The homeless count occurs every three years. So the 2020 report revealed that the number of seniors experiencing homelessness has increased steadily since 2002. The 2020 count reported that 24% of all of those 65 or older, sorry, they reported that 24% of all of those people counted were 65 years and over. For 45% of the respondents who were 55 and over, this was the first time they had experienced homelessness. These are the ones we call first timers. That's what our outreach folks call them. I call them how the hell did I get here? Because they have never been homeless before and they're confused and appalled that this has happened. These figures are actually in line with the observations that are made by our two sister tables, Richmond Homeless Connect and the Food Aid Delivery Coalition. It's distressing to hear that Richmond outreach workers are reporting an increasing number of seniors who are first timers. They take them to the shelter or to the hospital as there's no other options. But neither of these are appropriate places for unhoused seniors. This is what's happening. It's not surprising. We know that rents have skyrocketed. We know that we have a rental crisis on our hand, not necessarily a housing crisis, but certainly a rental crisis. We know the seniors are vulnerable in their rented units and they can find themselves out of a home when landlords wish to increase their earnings. And we also know that pensions haven't kept up with the rising cost of living for the essentials of daily life. We're in full support of this proposal and we look forward to the day when affordable rental housing for seniors opens in Richmond. Our seniors deserve better than the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Please, please come, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Kenny Simpson and I was a former transit driver of the 406 Railway through the corridor for this development. I transported many seniors through and it's a perfect location. As mentioned before, with Cindy, Richmond Center, short distance away, Stevenson Village and Seafar Shopping Center. I've transported many seniors and I think it's a short hop, three ways for them.
Good evening. Hello. I live in one of the Kiwanis buildings, in a Kiwanis apartment. My name is Carol Morell. I live at 9500 Tumaki Avenue, just on the other side of Walmart. And I've lived in Richmond for 48 years. I brought up my family here. And I worked on my life, collected an R S P and so on and so forth, retired in 2010. And then, of course, as we all know, prices have skyrocketed since 2010. Rents have at least doubled, more than doubled. Gas has doubled, groceries have doubled, and definitely our pensions have not kept up. I feel that Kiwanis has been a blessing for a lot of people, people that live in the Kiwanis Towers and live in Kiwanis apartments. I've definitely benefited from it. And if I if I didn't have a Kiwanis apartment, I would be spending more than half of my pension on on market rent, just on renting a place. So it makes it affordable and I don't have to leave Richmond, which I dearly love. I've lived here all my life and I really, really like living here. The facilities are second to none. I've made my and Kiwanis itself is very well run. It's clean, very hospitable, friendly. I've made a lot of friends there. Yeah, and really enjoy it. And I fully support this project. I think we need, there's a lot of seniors that need housing or affordable housing. Thank you. Excuse me.
Yes. And then the person there, who would like to be after that? Okay, we'll go to you, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. My name is Melissa Li. I am the owner and resident of eight five five one Caldero, which is actually in the middle adjacent to where this development is being proposed. This is going to be a tough for me to say because I think this is the first time tonight you're going to hear an opposition to the actual project itself. I am all for housing support. I'm all about supporting the seniors. My concerns are around the actual physical plans that are put forward for this development. It is a 58 unit, four story building. I am the house right behind smack in the middle. And from the plans that I have seen, there's a couple of things that stand out. Number one, there's only 21 parking stalls that have been in development for 58 units. Understandable, Cindy's mentioned, most of them probably will not drive, but someone that they know that will visit, that will take care of them, their grandchild, their child, their caregiver will likely show up in a in a car, a vehicle of some sort. Where are they going to find all the parking stalls to be able to house these individuals that are coming, even if it's for a short period of time? There is a walkway that is adjacent, again, right between the townhouses that were built recently and this proposed project, which leads me to believe that majority of them are going to then park right in front of our houses and then walk down to Railway to then visit those that they need to visit. So then as a resident and as an owner on the house of the other side, how do I regulate this? Do I call the city to say so and so cars have been parked outside of my home when I'm just there wanting to take my kids out and my dog to be right in front of our home and trying to find a spot for someone that might be coming to visit us or even for our own cars? The second thing that I want to bring up is around the plans that we have seen. Right on the other side of our fence line is a proposed to be the covered parking. And so that means that exactly on the other side of the fence of my home, there is actually going to be cars, I don't know how many stalls. I think about the emissions from these vehicles. I think about the environment of my yard directly on the other side of not just me, but the neighbors that I'm also beside me. I think about is that safe for my children? I think about the balconies that have been proposed to be built facing the neighborhood inside. And I can't regulate how an owner or resident of that property is going to choose to use the balcony. But I can tell you that I'm going to see them very, very clearly and they're going to see me very, very clearly because of the fact that it is again, four story high, which is higher. And I get it. She mentioned about the feet and the structure of it, but that still is a lot of elevation right behind another residential home. And so I think about the character of the neighborhood. I think about what's being proposed. I am not against housing support. I'm not against supporting the low income or the seniors. It's really hard to come up here and say all of that, especially with the last project that was proposed. But I'm coming here also and Counselor McNally also said it, we're it's about people. And I'm a person that is bought into this neighborhood because I wanted to raise my family in somewhere that was calm and somewhere that was safe and somewhere where I felt there was peace for them after a certain hour so that they could get rest and they can grow up. So those are, I'm going to double check again. There's a lot of different things. I don't doubt that Kiwanis is a great management company that's going to be able to support it. But I really am questioning the plans that have put forward around the physical build. And I think you're going to see a lot more responses from my neighbors and those that are in the just the houses behind it because we were always under the impression that this was a three story townhouse built similar to the project that was just done. And the tone, the character of the living is very different. And it's also going to affect all those within that radius of everyone that's there. And so while we're only discussing the project today and the way it looks now, because I know Counselor Laura brought that up, we were all under the impression these were townhouses, three story high, or else you would have definitely heard a lot more responses from us as neighbors, wanting to make sure that we preserved what the character of this neighborhood looked like when we bought into it, when we moved into it, and what we want it to look like for the years to come. So again, as an owner and a resident that is extremely close to this project with very young children that I also am trying to raise, I'm asking for you to reconsider the plans of what is actually put forward and make sure that it also supports those that are already living there around it. And the noise isn't so much about the construction. I understand that's going to be a short term pain that we'll go through, but it's about the noise of the 58 residents that potentially are going to move in ever so close to the three homes that they're right behind.
All right, we have a question from Counselor Day.
Thank you. I'm Counselor Day. Thank you for coming forward. I was hearing what you were saying about cars on the other side of your fence. But are you aware, and if you look at page, where is it here, 241, it shows that behind is the covered parkade, which is like a covered building. You can actually see it in this picture here. There's just a greenway on the east side.
But is that actually, is that against Railway or the inside of the build?
So here it says Railway Avenue.
Correct.
Okay. And up here, it's got the covered parking, which is a covered, it's not open. It's completely covered. If you look at this picture here.
Yeah.
So it's covered parking, right? And then it's finished. And then so you, they would, the people would access it from the side. But like, given that, sorry, go back to the right picture here, given that it's a green space in behind. So here you got Railway Avenue, you got the north side and the south side, and there's a greenway in behind. So there'll just be like a little pathway and trails and trees.
That's like, even if I think about the times that I've lost, my kids have kicked over the ball over the fence and how far it's gone into it. That's not a lot of space from what I can see proportional. Again, these are all plans that, and I literally just saw them this week around what it was going to look like and how it was going to impact us. So if there is greenway, you're right. So it's not directly on the other side of the fence, but it definitely is sure close proximity and everything is going through Railway. And even in the last project that I heard, they're at Stevenson and Railway, which Stevenson has two lanes of traffic on both sides, whereas Railway is just one to one. So I also think about the traffic flow that's going to happen of everyone lining up to turn into this complex off of Railway, whether what other way it is.
Okay, so just one other question. So this is how it's going to look, okay? On the east side, there's going to be an only one story that's going to be on the other side of your fence. So it's going to be one story tall and it's going to be basically a park. It's going to be like green space and there's going to be above planters. And then there's going to, they've just finished saying there's going to be privacy screens here and trees. So when you look in, the first, I think it's 40 feet, but staff can confirm this later, will be just a one level garage with like a park on top of it.
Mm hmm.
Is that going to, I mean?
I think the other question I have, and I don't have the architect background to be able to map this out, but how does that block natural light into our property as well? Like, given that, again, I'm one house of three houses in a row that's going to have this building, whether it's one story closest to us and then four, three more stories behind it. But where is the sunlight? How is it going to land on our home throughout the day? And so, again, I think about natural sunlight, how it impacts all of us mentally. And I just imagine that with this story, they're building it. And the way it works, it's not even just about airflow going through my home. It's going to be about the light that I naturally get in.
Okay, can I ask you one other question?
Of course.
Are you familiar with the Ukrainian apartment building?
Yes, I am.
This is a picture of the Ukrainian parking building, Ukrainian building. It's three stories tall, whereas this one is only going to be one story tall at the back. This picture was taken at 3:30 this afternoon today. And as you can see, there's about maybe three feet of shade on the other side of the fence. Do you feel that that would?
But that's also with all that field that you've got in there, right? You also have to consider the proximity of where. You also have to consider the proximity of where the home is going, like where my house would be on the other side of it. Like, I would have to measure out exactly the footage that I have in my yard or from my physical home to that gate to see if that would be the same amount of sunlight that's being shined in. And I know for a fact that our three houses have different depths of yard of where the property might begin and that would absolutely then impact the way that my neighbors also get natural light.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you very much. Yeah. So then, after this speaker, we'll have the lady here and then we'll have the lady in the gray and white. The keener waving her hand. We'll get to all.
Yes, um, hello everybody, I'm Daphne. Um, I live in our, uh, exact the the townhouse. Uh, Daphne Wong. And it's exactly next to the, the townhouse next to the the lock that the the proposed apartment. So, um, you know, like, we have six, we have seventeen units in our complex. Actually, almost all of us doesn't aware of this proposal change because all of us were told that uh, it it should be a townhouse project for that lock, actually. And we we just moved in like few months ago and then until few days ago, we got the letter from from the from the city and then telling us, oh, we don't, even though the 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 project is going to be changed to the, like an apartment building. So we we understand there, we are, we have a responsibility to support like a a senior housing, but is it really a proper location building there? Because it's actually really very close to our our complex. And you know, in our complex, we already increased the 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 density, the density on in in those area, right? So in our complex, we already have like seven units, we already have so many people sleep in that area. We although the railway is actually a very quiet road and quiet area and even they only have single link, single link in each direction, right? I'm I'm very wary about the densities, if increase so many density, it's a really, I think it affects the labor so much. And also the parking issue that the lady mentioned earlier. It's really not even one, one parking for each unit. So it really like, there's no parking on railway. There's no any street parking on railway. We all know that. So those people will will probably be parked close to our our townhouse or close to the house behind the the street, right? So it's really, I don't think it is a proper place to build like a, like a, like a four-story building there. Um, also the privacy reason is if you go to the side, you will find that the sidewalk next to our townhouse is very narrow, it's very narrow. It's like very close to the the Johnson building. So really, and also, yeah, so and you know, I'm also a a young family and I'm trying to like, like build up my family, like raise my family and having a baby in the future. If it really building that like a four-story building, I think it takes very long to build a building. Uh, it may cost a little bit health issue or something. So, yeah, and we all know that like, on the data we've read, all of us, actually out in our complex, we have, at this moment, we have twelve units against this proportion. Some of them even, we we cannot reach them, but we know that they are not aware of this proportion. So we are direct impacted because we are just very close to the that law. And, yeah, so I really, I I cannot agree, I I don't think it's a proper location to build this, yeah.
Are you aware that? This actually came to planning committee on June twenty-eighth of this year?
No, actually, because we are new moving, we just start moving in in June. We don't, we don't saw any letter comes from the city. I don't know if maybe the builder got the letter before and then nobody told us. But the day when we purchased this property, we were told that it is a townhouse complex. That's why we choose to live here because we know this community is very quiet and then we want to grow up our family, right? We need to raise our families, so.
So when when you were looking to buy your townhouse, did you not see the the development sign, a large sign with, was it blue or red? I think it's blue, yeah, red sign that said.
It was about two years ago because our townhouse, like, when the day we purchased it, yeah, it we were told by the builder, it was, it it should be a townhouse complex, actually.
Okay.
Uh, just one last question. Are you on the, on the north side or the south side? Are you closer to Steveson or closer to Blondell?
Close to the Steveson.
Closer to Steveson.
Like, uh, so here's the townhouse, there's a fairly narrow sidewalk and this is the lock, like you were planning to to build the residential, yeah.
Right, you, there's a bit of a setback on the, on the south side. You're on the south side. So there's a, there's a setback. Just so you know, it's a green space here and then there's a setback. And then on the other side, there's like a driveway, but you're on the south side.
Yeah, yeah, you're on the south side.
So there'll be no cars on that side. It's just be walking.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know.
We're here to ask questions, councillor Day.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. This lady here and then this person, who would like to be after that? Okay, we'll go to you.
Uh, thank you very much. My name is Suzanne Woods and I currently live in Kiwanis Towers on Gomler Avenue, just down the street from here. I've been there for eight years since that building was first built. Um, enjoyed the benefits of living in community with other seniors. I think that's a very beneficial feature as we age out uh, to have a- associations and friendships in our community. Uh, the building is very well managed. Kiwanis does a wonderful job of treating us very kindly. Um, in terms of the parking situation that I've heard heard mentioned, we have two towers and I think maybe we have fifty parking stalls in the building. So we're not driving a lot. There's not a lot of cars coming and going. And we're fairly quiet people. We, we don't party, we don't carry on. I understand the concerns of the neighbors. Um, I lived in Vancouver for a while and they built a firehouse right behind my house. So I get it, you know, but perhaps just to mention that most of us are grandparents and these people that are living behind, yes, the raising families could be beneficial to them to have grandparents living nearby, people that could help them. It's, it's a community. Uh, I understand it's, it's frustrating, but um, I just wanna give them some assurance that the Kiwanis is very well managed. Um, we're very quiet. We're probably not on our balconies in the evenings or anywhere paring into their yards, if that's a concern. Um, we are considerate people and um, we all wanna live peacefully. So as I say, I do understand their concerns, but um, we're seniors. We've lived in Richmond for many, many years. We've contributed. And it is nice to be living in community with other friends and having those benefits. So thank you very much.
Okay. So this person. Hard to miss. And then we have the gentleman in the front row, who would like to go after that? Okay, we'll go to you.
Sorry, I have a lot of information. Okay. Mayor, the councils. I live at eight four nine one Calder Road. My name is Irene Chan. Um, I gathered around forty signatures in the petition letter in only three days. So you understand we have limited time, very short span of time to fully digest those material. Uh, we know our social responsibility, but we're taken by shock how the project comes so fast without our knowledge. I gather some information. The three lots of land value eight million dollars. The first two lots were purchased in two thousand eighteen. The the third lot was purchased in two thousand nineteen, March. And the first signs show up in two thousand nineteen and the application was townhouse. And this application was withdrawn, okay? And then in two thousand twenty-one, another sign came up. Two thousand twenty-one July, another sign came up. And one of the owner in two thousand twenty-two, Mrs. Stella Choi, okay, called city planner, Stephen, and asked, oh, oh, how come it becomes um, an apartment? We are so shocked, okay? And then Stephen kept saying, oh, you'll get more information, you'll get the information. And what a pity, he didn't, she didn't send out black and white email and ask. Okay, so we have no idea what's happening at the back because we are inside Calder Road. We draw, we drive our car on Quebec and north. We will never go down. And then we walk inside our neighborhood, okay? So I stress again, our social responsibility. I understand we are short of senior care, um, rental units. We fully support it. And then, um, we, on behalf of those residents, I oppose to this project because of four concerns. First, increased density. Second, loss of sunlight. Third, loss of privacy. Fourth, street parking issue. Concern number one, increased density. Okay, the existing zoning of these properties is single-family houses, R S one E. The approved O C P, official community plan land use is neighborhood residential, which permits single-family, two families and multiple-family townowners like Daphne, who purchased the properties two years ago and just moved in two months, three months ago, okay? Besides, Railway Avenue is a major arterial road with single lane. Unlike other arterial road with two lanes, we only have single lane, remember, single lane. Under arterial road land use map, use of arterial road townhouses is designated. That's why she purchased townhouses. Under arterial road townhouses guidelines, two-to-three-story townhouses with zero point six floor area ratio, F A R, are permitted. Uh, versus four-story apartment with one point two seven F A R floor area ratio. And I was surprised to find that City of Richmond have a bonus floor ratio for senior housing of this project, point two, under O C P. It's still under O C P, not approved yet, I believe so, okay? But it's put tailor-made in this project. The proposed change of O C P destination from neighbor residential to apartment residential is not supported. Arterial road townhouses, just like the developments to the south of the proposal, uh, here. Uh, maybe the council can, the south of the proposal here, okay? Are more appropriate to the character of our residential neighborhood. Three stories townhouses in front rows with maximum six units and two-story duplexes at rear row, so two-story duplexes. So that's what Daphne is saying right now. Okay, so this is the arterial road townhouse map. Arterial road housing development. Yeah, and the green color is the, the townhouses, houses. Then we are ready.
Ma'am, I said you're talking to us.
I don't know that.
Not them.
Okay.
You're talking to us.
Okay, yo, okay, I understand. And concern number two, the loss of sunlight after twelve P M noon. So shadow report, you can see shadow report of page two hundred forty-five. Two hundred forty-five, okay. Have the planner or the architect considered the health and the well-being of residents directly living at the back, like Melissa? This would downgrade the quality of their life. Downgrade the quality of the life. Okay, you won't see the sun after twelve P M. This is a report showing directly that four houses immediately just next to it won't see the sun. That will affect a lot health, that's definitely. If I don't see the sun, I, I will have depression, I tell you. Concern number three, privacy issue. Okay, Cindy just mentioned, it's just one or two feet above, okay, the townhouses. But how high is the apartment? Fifty feet. I didn't go through carefully, but I remember it's about that high. But it doesn't go, it doesn't belong, okay? Along Railway Avenue, all the townhouses or houses like this, suddenly, a square up like this. And why is there empty area of five thousand square feet above the cover parking while there is already interior amenity of a thousand feet inside? I remember, um, let's say July twenty-fourth, first reading, there are, there were four councillors making comments. Uh, the first one probably is Michael Wolf, councillor Michael Wolf. He said, oh, he's pleased that, um, there is a amenity is over the cover parking, which is not supposed to be like that. I can never imagine, we are not living like Carisdale, Vancouver, we have bad lane. You know, you just see the neighbors backyard, okay? Concern number four, street parking. Okay, the la, the eligible age is fifty-five. This age group of seniors are still active and could own cars. Twenty-one parking spaces may not be sufficient for fifty-eight units. For overflow of cars, residents could park their car at Calder Road and use a public walkway at the south of the proposed development to go home conveniently. So this could disturb the street parking condition at Calder Road. Um, I do not know how they designed it, this building. Uh, maybe the city planner can tell us the residents. But we were given so short notice and I have to go through it. I'm not professional and asked a lot of my friends seeking help from this and there to gather all those information. Cities should be more transparent. The applicant, the developer should come and talk with us first. We know our social responsibility. We know it. One of, um, Lucas who live at the townhouse, he told me he was sixty percent for me. That means he is forty percent for City Hall. Uh, the applicant, he just don't like the density, doesn't like the density, doesn't like the design, you know?
Ma'am, we're gonna have to get you to wrap it up.
Okay, to wrap it up, we oppose the design of this. And you, um, it affects our life, our health. They have to redo the whole design in order to get the residents to approve it. We understand a lot people need. Thank you.
All right, uh, this is Mr. Dunphy and after that gentleman in the second row. Sir, I'm recognizing you, the man on a shirt.
Thank you. Um, my name again is Evan Dunphy. I live at six six five five Linus Lane, right on the Greenway, uh, Railway Greenway as well. Um, this is the best project I've ever seen come before this council or the last council. I just got back from two months in Europe. Four sto, four stories like this is the minimum you will find in a proper city. We should be aspiring to this kind of housing. We should be aspiring to this kind of housing in many, many more places. There's been some concerns about parking. If people want to apply to live in this building and there's no parking available. People that own cars won't live there. It's very simple. You know, if you have five kids, you won't move into a one bedroom apartment. Same thing goes with if you own a car and there is no parking available, you won't be able to live in that building. We have streets per- uh parking regulations already in place that will prevent people leaving their cars overnight in other neighborhoods. It's laughable to hear people talk about, well, my neighbors can't park in, on my street because I wanna park on my street. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. I really want you to think about if this project wasn't for seniors. If this project existed exactly how it exists now, but was for friends that I went to high school with, who have been forced to move out to Abbotsford, to Langley. Uh, stay living at home with their parents, would you think about this project the same way? And if not, I want you to seriously consider why that is. This is a great project and I'm really happy that it's, you know, going to house seniors who need housing. Fifty percent lemur is incredible. Look around every other project, getting, imagine getting to fifty percent lemur in a project, how incredible that is. Ask the applicant how they made that happen. How they made their pro forma work to be able to deliver fifty percent of the units as lemur. This wouldn't be possible without the reduction in parking. We're hearing from developers who are budgeting over a hundred thousand dollars per stall in some of our downtown developments. Next to Canada Line, adding a hundred thousand dollars to cost their unit to build an underground parking lot, parking stall. More and more people my age aren't driving cars, I don't drive a car, I don't own a car, I walk everywhere. Um, we need solutions like this everywhere. If this project wouldn't be viable, not, not just not fifty percent affordable. Zero rental housing, if this project had to follow the regular parking regulations. You seriously need to consider if those parking regulations are holding us back from delivering housing in this city. Cause if this project needs special treatment to go ahead, that's a really big problem, problem. Because this is a great project and it should be a gold standard for what is possible in this city. I, 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 we heard a lot about neighborhood character. And so I wanna talk about what neighborhood character means to me. I live in a, a quite affordable building, um, Brayside at Linus Lane, it was built in nineteen eighty one. It's one of the cheaper buildings to own in, in the city, there's a lot of um, you know, people who are living on pensions, people who are taking care of, um, of dependents. And it's a great community where we look after one another, uh during the pandemic, people were getting groceries for one another, um. People look, look after each other's pets, look at, pick up each other's kids from school. That's what neighborhood character is and that's what we should be aspiring to, not some, not some vague aesthetic. That, well, this place doesn't have a pointy roof, therefore it doesn't fit into my neighborhood. This is gonna provide housing for seniors who maybe right now are, are living in a single family home by themselves. It's much too big for what they need, but they wanna stay in their neighborhood and there's no option for them to downsize into anything. And this will create an opportunity in that neighborhood for people to downsize into, that's incredible, we, every neighborhood should have that. Allow people to stay in their communities to continue that neighborhood character of looking after one another. But I also wanna really drive home that point of, if this wasn't for seniors, if it was for people my age. People, you know, with young families, would you still be supportive of the concessions in policy that were made to make this happen? And think about down the line whether or not we need to change those policies so that more stuff like this can get built for everyone. You know, Richmond has fewer children ages zero to fourteen living in the city today than we did in two thousand and one. And so much of that is because of our housing policies that have forced out young families. So I am fully supportive of this project, I think it's amazing that it's gonna provide fifty eight units of housing for seniors. I think the city does an amazing job of taking care of seniors. I think best, best in the region by far. But I also want you to really critically think about what made this project work, what makes it work? And how we can replicate that for everyone across the, the spectrum of our community. Um, so that more and more people could get opportunities to live in housing like this. Um, so again, just fully support this, it's the best project that I've seen come forward. Uh, I really, really hope that you'll support it tonight and moving forward, I hope you'll look at what made this project work. And, and change the policies to make more of them available, thank you.
Okay, so the next jo- is the gentleman in the second row? That's you? Who would like to go next? Yes, sir, we'll have you. And then this lady here.
Yeah, my name is Hanif Kotadia, I live at eight four seven one Calder Road. Not directly affected by the buildings that are going in, but very close to one of, some of the buildings that are affected. Not too far from it. I'm, I'm very surprised at what I'm hearing from the, the people who are promoting this project. I am in favor of seniors housing, I'm nothing against what is happening in the building. My concerns are, when I look at the plans, the plans don't look anything like what the presenters are presenting. The building is a monster compared to all the, most of the other ninety nine percent of the buildings in that area. The building is over fifty feet in height. Most of the other houses are between twenty and twenty four feet to the rooftops. The shadow that this building will throw is going to put those three and a half houses in the dark afternoon. Just like the report shows, the shadow report, because the sun comes to, and I've witnessed this. I have houses behind, uh, I face the west, I can see the trees behind my house. And I can see another property, but when I look at the distances from the fence line that I have to where they are talking about their house, it's not behind me that these are, this is going in. But when I compare it as if it was going on behind my house, that it would really put me in the dark also. So the plans really need to be looked at. That, that is very important, uh. The, the other thing is, I didn't become aware that this project is going on until very recently when I got the letter. The sign, the rezoning sign that people are talking about, that's located out on railway. That portion of railway for us living on Calder Road, we don't even travel. Because we bypass it when we enter our subdivision from the south or the north. The, the letter that I got on September the fifth, or, or regarding this hearing. Uh, I think that was close to August the twenty third. That is the first time that I've heard of this thing going on. And I've also heard that it doesn't meet the official community plan. And, and I've heard terminology that this was spot rezoning. Like, it, it, it doesn't have to meet, or something is not quite same as what we normally do with zoning requirements. It seems to be accelerated and I don't know why that is the case. Um, and I don't know what the justification is for bypassing the normal zoning process. Um, as, as far as documentation, all the documents that I've seen do not reflect what everybody here is talking about. The building is gonna be a very big building, it's got a garage and the garage is on the on the west side, sorry, the garage is on the east side of the building. But the rest of the building is so big that it's gonna overimpose everything else. Once you look at the plans properly, and I'm an engineer, I look at plans all the time. And it is disturbing because whatever people are saying is not the same as what I see on the plans. Something is not quite connecting right. Um, that, that is, that is all, all I have to say is, is somebody needs to look at the plans. I'm not against the project, I'm not against any seniors housing or anything, but the buildings that is proposed doesn't meet. That it's, it's be a, an eyesore and it'll block out the, the, the neighbors at the back.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Carol, uh, councillor day, a quick question?
Yeah, just a quick question, thank you, being an engineer, so, um, I hear what you're saying. Um, page two forty six of the report has the bylaw requirements, which is a setback from the front, the back, lock coverage. It also has what is proposed, there are no variances requested whatsoever.
What is your question?
Do you feel that if you, um, had had the entire report, that you'd be able to understand that this is not changing the bylaw requirements, like, what, what would it take to make you feel comfortable? That the, the bylaw requirements are being followed?
What, what, what I, I'm not, I was, I was concerned about was a first hearing was already made. And it's on YouTube and I listened to it, I wasn't even aware that it was ever happening. And I've also heard now tonight that in twenty eighteen, some proposal was made for townhouses. And then another proposal was made after that. And, and it's, it's something that has, hasn't been really transparent for the people who are in that neighborhood of all the things that are happening. And, and what is being proposed to be built there does not meet anywhere near the area that it is now. If, wherever, if somebody gets a chance in the council, they should drive by and take a look at it. And they can come to my house, look at the window and they can see what a fifty foot building is going to do to my house if it was in, behind my house. I, I have sympathies for the people whose houses are being affected.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Um, just before we go to the next speaker. Um, I wanna ask staff about the heights. What's the, what, what, what's the height of this proposal compared, um, how does it compare to the next door? Go ahead.
Yes, to your worship, uh, can you hear me? Um, yes, thank you, so, uh, so the, the proposed height of this building is uh, at, to the top of the building parapet, where it's normally measured to is thirteen point five meters, which is about forty four feet. Um, the elevator overrun runs up to, to fifteen meters. Uh, just by comparison, the three story townhouse development to the south is twelve meters or thirty nine feet to the top of roof. Uh, so overall, in comparison between the two, the shading implications would be quite minimal.
All right, all right, thank you, yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council people, um, my name's Tyler Johnson, I am a resident of Vancouver. I am the representative of the third party management company that manages the Qantas Towers currently. Uh, that's two hundred ninety six units twin towers with amenities. Um, I can tell you that in talking, having run this complex, uh, and being involved in the planning here at this, this very, uh, building, prior to the first spade going into the ground, I can tell you that, um. It, for the residents that live there, it's like winning the lottery, it is first class accommodations for a very, very affordable price. The intention of the new building is due to the si- to do the same. So it's going to give much added, uh, housing for seniors, uh, who have income restrictions. Saying that, I think everybody can appreciate that and I don't think anybody spoke against housing seniors, um. Who have an econo- economic need to have affordable housing. Uh, but to speak specifically to the issues that were brought forth by the residents, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, first of all, to be specific. Richmond, Richmond Qantas is two hundred and ninety six units, it has sixty six zero parking stalls. So the ratio, you can do it in your head, is less than twenty five percent. The new building is fifty eight units, has twenty seven stalls, the ratio was much, much higher. Our experience is seniors don't drive, they're in affordable housing, cars are expensive, so they take transit. So having this ratio of almost point five would be adequate parking for this particular building and would alleviate the need for street parking. Being, that being one of the concerns brought forth earlier by one of the neighboring residents. In relation to visitor parking, yes, they have caregivers and visitors, there are seven visitor stalls specifically for this new project. The two hundred and ninety six unit project that we manage on Minero, um, next to Richmond Centre has fifteen visitor stalls, so you wanna do the math, it's fifteen stalls for two hundred and ninety six units. And here we have seven stalls for fifty eight. So that, and we don't have a, uh, a parking issue for visitors and caregivers coming to the building in the two hundred and ninety six unit complex, as you know, or probably know, there's very limited or no street parking in that neighborhood, within blocks. So that's, that part I think is not, it's a concern brought up and a real concern, but not one that's valid. If you wanna do a, a, a shadow study on the building, it's a computer program, easily done. This is forty four feet or just a little less. Do the shadow study, it's not going to impact the neighboring houses in any way that is being described by the neighboring the residents of the neighboring houses and this is not an opinion, you can actually just do that study, it's a program, you can run it, it's pretty simple. Um, the other concern is noise, well, uh, this is the most well behaved building currently we've managing for the last eight years that you could ever imagine. We manage my firm Shangri-La, Fort, uh, Fairmont Pack Rim, we manage the Trump Tower, now the Paradox. We manage Woodward's, we manage all kinds of buildings, high end, low end, you name it. I have never managed in my three decades a building with this wonderful of a, a, a tenant base. Literally eight years, no problems. So I, I think that I can, if you wanna talk other types of affordable housing and the type of problems, and I can speak to that too cause I've managed S R Os in my career, uh, different animal. This is seniors, these are your parents and grandparents living here, so that issue is not an issue. So I would encourage people to be a little bit more, more open minded in relation to this, this is very, very much needed in this city. The Qantas as somebody mentioned is in fact a jewel of this city. Um, the CEO of C M H C brought an entourage from Ottawa just to see the building. It's, uh, and, and the other thing that's important to recognize when you talk about size, is there's an economy of scale, I'm the guy that does the budgets. So you have to run sixty units in order to have an economy of se- scale to be able to afford the type of staffing and things that you need, that's the bare minimum. And we don't wanna be asking for subsidies, subsidies from the city or anyone else, C M H C. We wanna have a self sufficient property, just like the other one is. We don't ask anybody for any money and we keep the rents at about eight hundred dollars on average for a one bedroom condo. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Um, we're going to this person there and then we'll go to the person in the back, uh, with his hand up. Who else wants to speak to us tonight on this? Are there any other speakers? Okay, so this lady here will be the last speaker.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Shear, I'm a resident of eight five three one Calder Road. I'm strongly opposed to zoning amendment and that's why I'm here, this is the first time I'm attending this kinds of, uh, public hearing. I'm very concerned about this building, a fifty eight unit, uh, four story low rise rental apartment in the quiet residential uh, neighborhood. Uh, the notice of a public hearing, the letter that I received was, um, on August twenty fourth, so we just less than, um. Ten days, then we tried to collect some information, of course, I'm not like Hanifa, I, I'm a nurse, so I don't understand this layout and I do not understand. But then according to this page, uh, two forty five that, from the agenda, that with this uh, shadow study, then my house will be so completely hundred percent impacted with, uh, no sunlight. So I'm, I'm also that, um, I, we, people are mentioning about this, the sign that I happened to walk down there, take a look of it. And they stated that is, doesn't, doesn't say, so stated that, um, they're gonna put the twenty nine low end market rental unit and twenty nine market rental unit, that's not. and twenty-nine market rental unit, does not mention senior at all. So I'm very, very confused tonight that hearing from people that hundred percent senior housing, but the sign doesn't say it. So I need some kinds of transparency, uh, what is going on? Another one is, I was told is fifty-five age considered as a senior. And then the lady that, in the beginning of the presentation, was talking about eighty or sixty. So that's very, that's conflict information here, it's not, it's not, it's not right. And then sixty-years-old senior, I, I don't have a statistical data to prove that. There's a lot of people I have know, eighty-plus, they still driving, they do drive, right? So cannot, we cannot do the, oh, no senior, people don't drive. So this is, we need some kinds of, um, clear direction, is this really for senior? And of course, the housing thing, that, um, the privacy thing, a lot of things that we do not know about it. So I'm requesting to review those kinds of whole details and see what is the best to answer our concern. And then we go from there instead of move forward, because I did call Steve, Stephen or someone. I said, what is going on? It's gonna build something like that, I'm a nurse, so I supporting the senior housing for sure, right? But then, I don't, I don't like the, some kinds of surprise, hey, gonna do it. And then what he said to me, the person said to me, oh, Rosa, that's gonna happen, this is a trend, okay, I understand the, the issue, yeah, I understand. But then he said, uh, how many people coming for this hearing? Doesn't matter how many people opposing and yelling, no, 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 but council, you guys are there, could make the decision. I said, that's, that's not a democracy way of talking like that, right? And he said, oh, well, because you guys are voted for them, right? This is, this is a very negative way of response from him. And I, I'm strongly, uh, advised, uh, to really review this, uh, this project. And then I'm, I understand that people that live there, that you, you guys, you, if something happened, this, this, um, the big building, building behind you, and it could have a lot of negative impact. We choose to live in, in Richmond, which is a very quiet neighborhood, then how do you feel about it? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So, um, yes. And if you could be ready to go? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counselor, my name is Stella. And my husband and I are in, uh, the owners of eight-five-seven-one Calder Road. So I'm fully, um, affected by this rezoning. So since my neighbor had talked about all the problems, all my concern. So I just want to, uh, bring out that, uh, this proposed new apartment disrupt the quiet and peaceful environment of the neighborhood. So we strongly oppose to this rezoning application. So I won't repeat, you know, all those, uh, problem, because I know now is quite late. But I just want, uh, the city to consider the following. Um, according to the applicant's proposed plan, all the units of the apartment at the back, that is east side, facing my house, and have balconies. So residents of tens of units above our fence level will have sights of our daily lives. Especially when we have guests and our grandchildren, they are playing in the backyard, this is what I concern most. And the proposed new apartment with so many units would change our low-density populated area into a high-density community, which again will bring light, noise pollution, and visitors parking problem, which I will not repeat again. So this is supposed to be a place we choose for retirement for the next ten or twenty years. But now, we strongly feel that this is not the case and make our dream turning into a nightmare. So we are extremely upset about this. So in view of this, uh, of the above mention, we oppose this application for rezoning, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, yes, sir. And then this lady over here.
Good evening again, uh, my name, I am Vini and I live at Skunner Court. Uh, I am, uh, frankly, reacting mostly to some of the feedback that, that has been given about the, the project. So, uh, Skunner Court, which is, uh, Spal Kutasak on the way, uh, to, uh, to Stiffson Village. Uh, there is no, so to speak, density there, it's all single-family home. Uh, you would think that there is some of that elusive character there. But the truth is that since, uh, my family and I have, have moved there about eight years ago, uh, every year there is at least, uh, one construction site going on, uh, but sometimes multiple. Uh, and that is because, uh, if you own a single-family home, for the most part, you know, if you're within bylaws, you can, uh, build as large and tall as you want, uh, as long as it's, uh, within the zoning. So in my particular home, uh, I've, I've had quite a bit of sunlight that has already been, uh, blocked by, uh, by bigger homes that have been, uh, built over bungalows and Vancouver specials. And frankly, guess what? It's, you know, they, they own their property, it's their right to do all of those things. And, uh, any harm that has come to me as a result of the taller buildings are extremely marginal and incidental at best. Uh, but has mostly been disrupted, has, has been the non-stop construction. But really, again, people have to live, they, they have the right to do, uh, what they, uh, they're looking to do with their property. Uh, and frankly, you know, at the end of the day, it is what it is. Uh, which, uh, you know, brings me back to, uh, you know, a, a lot of people raising issues around, you know, noise and character for, for this project. Uh, this is, we're like, we're bringing in, uh, like, it, 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 it's going to be dozens of, you know, seniors who will be patronizing, uh, sorry, they'll be, you know, going to local businesses and, you know, visiting local parks and, you know, meeting their neighbors. There are people, you know, who are not gonna, you know, just go there and, you know, drive off to some other place in the city to, uh, commute or otherwise not interact with the community. Uh, there, rest assured, there will be a lot of character as a result, uh, of, of, of this project. Uh, because there'll be, uh, there'll, there'll be neighbors who will primarily have limited mobility. And as such, uh, they will, uh, you know, by sheer force of geography, be compelled to interact, uh, with their neighbors at, at some point. Uh, so I, I brought that kind of point with my own Kutasak, uh, because really, uh, you know, it, it definitely does feel, uh, it, it's sterile sometimes. And where, in, in, in terms of, uh, you know, actual living, I'll often see little else other than, you know, cars going on and about, cuz again, it's a car-driven neighborhood, so there's not a whole lot to do on foot. Uh, as well as, you know, construction, uh, from, you know, bigger and bigger homes being built on single-family lots. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna rely my own e, e, experience and, and saying that I think that, like, all of this, you know, kinda character noise, uh, o, opposition. I, I, I believe if this project is approved, uh, over the years, once construction is complete, of course, I, I believe those concerns, uh, will, will prove to be, uh, largely unfounded. Uh, and, and frankly, at, at the end of the day, uh, people, uh, do have, uh, chungian accent, uh, property rights over what they can do. And as long as, you know, people are not being, you know, uh, like actively maliciously harmed, at the end of the day, uh, shelter is a fundamental necessity. Uh, and frankly, people shouldn't be getting in the way of that over other, uh, petty reasons. Uh, and, and frankly, if it's such a problem, uh, at, at the end of the day, you, you know, it, it's, it's a, a free housing market out there. And, uh, if, you know, if, if people end up concerned, oh, you know, like those things are going to depreciate the value of my property. Well, uh, if you then together and, you know, propose enough zoning, your property value will go way up. And I'm sure that with the windfall, we can take vacations on place to have some of that so elusive character, thank you.
Thank you, yes, our last speaker is here.
Good evening, Mayor Brody and councilors, thank you for your time. My name is Nolene Ekstrom, and I am the daughter of Maya Persad from eighty-five-hundred Railway Avenue. She is the direct, um, home that's beside the new proposed building that we're not opposed to, because we believe that the seniors do need hu, housing and that there's such a shortage. I have two concerns that I'd like to bring up today. One would be, is it possible to receive a geotechnical report? So we can see how an infrastructure such as what is being proposed and how it will affect the stability of the home beside and behind. And number two, oh my God, I'm getting nervous. Number two is, um, what's the city's vision for moving north of this structure? Because it seems like we're getting higher and higher. But what's the vision for everyone left of this building?
All right, let's, uh, we'll ask staff. We'll ask staffers some assistance on that. Um, what can you say about a geotechnical report?
Uh, through Your Worship, a geotechnical report will be required should the rezoning proceed as part of the building permit application. Uh, we, given the concern noted, uh, I'm sure the applicant will be more than willing to meet with your mother to discuss, uh, monitoring of the site should that be needed as part of the construction process. Uh, in terms of the, uh, future development of railway, the current OCP designation is for townhouse development on Railway Avenue. Having said that, as with this project, there are provisions within the OCP that do allow council to consider, uh, increased density for purpose-built rental projects such as this. I would also say that the city is in the midst of reviewing the OCP in general, and that there may be future changes as part of the OCP review. There will be public consultation events arranged throughout the city as part of the OCP review in the coming months and year.
Thank you. One, one last question, um, is this federal or is this city? Is this also a part of a federal plan?
No, 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 the previous one was part of a, a federal plan. This is a, a city rezoning with the landowner and, you know, the, their, their related structure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone wanting to speak for a second time, uh, based on new information? Anyone? Okay, so it's moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Day.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions to staff, um, I think we had some great presentations tonight, and it's always good to get answers to the questions. Um, so, uh, the, 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 in the, um, in our, in our agenda, it's got the purpose of rezoning amendment, it says to create low-rise apartment, blah, 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 to allow one hundred percent rental senior housing development. Is that the same text that was on the sign in front of the property?
Through Your Worship to Counselor Day, the development signage was posted on the property in August of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the development signage, uh, indicated that it was a four-story apartment building consisting of approximately sixty-one units. Over time and through course of staff review, that proposal has, uh, changed to result in what's before council today.
So the current sign on the pro, project is what it says in our agenda? No, it doesn't. Okay, well, I think that that's something we definitely need to work on for the future, because, um, confusion leads to confusion. And so that's something that we can work on in-house. Having said that, uh, we've heard, uh, people concerned about construction noise. Well, earlier today, we had a finance committee report, and, um, in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-three, we approved approximately two hundred eighty-six million dollars in construction. That's an increase of eight point nine percent in the same period last year. And there were two hundred sixty-one housing starts in Richmond in the second quarter of this year. Richmond's growing, and the reason it's growing is because we, people wanna live here. And just like all of us, uh, bought our places or rented our places, there's more people lined up, ready to come to Richmond. Nowhere is the need more serious than with seniors. Seniors have limited income, most of them live on a very fixed pension. And so subsequently, when you look at the rates of rent that would be charged for these, um, twenty-nine rental units that are low-end market rental, it starts off at like eight hundred and eleven dollars and works its way up to twelve hundred dollars. That's affordable for a senior living on a fixed income. We have heard from some of the seniors who currently live and have won the lottery in the current, um, Kiwanis building. So I think that providing this type of housing is, is just critical. Um, having said that, what do you do when it backs onto an existing neighborhood? Well, when I saw this plan, of course, the first thing I thought is, whoa, we're going four stories. But as you can see, it's just one story on the east side, which backs onto those houses. And then on top of that one story will be a really lovely patio with trees along the east side, and as the developer and architect have said, a privacy screen. So that just leaves the windows, are the windows an issue? Well, again, these apartments that face the east side will be far, far away from the property line. I just wanna ask staff, those balconies on the, um, the second, third and fourth story, how far away will they be from the fence line?
Oh, yes, through Your Worship to Counselor Day, um, that they would be, I'm just trying to do the math, you may have twenty-four meters away from the property line.
So in feet, sorry, help me.
Uh, sorry, twenty-four, is it not?
Twenty-four meters, that's what about seven, eighty feet? Oh, okay, so eighty feet away from the fence will be the balconies. That's, that's bigger than a lot of lots are these days. Had someone decided to build townhouses, they would be extremely close to the fence. And those windows would look directly, window to window. Whereas this complex, the entire first floor is gonna be a parking garage. And so there, there won't be the kind of, um, looking out the window, window to window. So that's one of the reasons I think this is a good project. But I do think we do need better communication. Um, I've long argued that the hundred-foot, um, notification area isn't near enough, and I still feel that we should double or triple that, so that there can be less meetings like this with all this confusion. Because, um, every neighbor, you know, every neighborhood should have a rental building like this, so that if people move out of their homes because they can no longer care for them, they can stay in the neighborhood. And I, I, I agree with Mr. Dunphy when he says that. Um, so then staff said that, um, a townhouse is twelve meters tall. This one is thirteen point two-five meters tall, one point two-five meters more. That's like this much. I don't think that's worth worrying about, especially when the setback is eighty feet. So I think from practicality perspective, this is probably the best that we're gonna do for this area. Um, it was asked, how would you like to have this in your neighborhood? Well, I did, I had a huge, uh, high-density townhouse complex built in my neighborhood, and it was overbearing. On the end of my street, I've got the gardens, it's like ten stories tall, and it looks straight down on my road. We live in a city, development is inevitable, and we can only try to influence the development by meetings like this. But I don't think we're gonna do much better than this. When I hear the concern about, oh, the density, the density is too many people, we've heard the representatives say there'll be eighty to eighty-five seniors, and their average age will be about seventy-five years old. They're not having parties and, you know, making a lot of noise, and most of them do not drive. I speak from experience from my own parents. So I'm just not concerned about it, I think that we have to look at the greater good. And, um, for the few properties that do back onto this, you'll have a long buffer before you're looking at anything. And, um, and I don't buy for one second that the sunlight is an issue, because I went there today, and I looked at the, um, the Ukrainian building, which is also on railway, and there was just three feet of shade. That's it, three feet of shade, three-thirty today. So I don't think that's a valid argument. So I think that we have to all give and take, I had to give and take in my neighborhood, we have to give and take in this neighborhood. We have to accommodate the people who desperately wanna stay in Richmond, especially the seniors that are our pioneers, so the ones who built Richmond. We need to make a space for them, I'll be supporting this.
Counselor Glanders.
Thank you, Your Worship, um, thank you to everyone.
Thank you to everybody who came out to speak tonight, everybody in favor and everybody who had concerns. It's important to hear from you and we, we choose to hear from you and, you know, I, I live in a single-family neighborhood, I live in a small house in a single-family neighborhood and the original character of that neighborhood were small houses, one story, one, one and a half and two story. And I've got, now the houses are built at the back of the lot with the big attached garages at the front of the lot. So in my backyard, it's a big three-story mansion right at the fence line, looking right down on, on our backyard and on this side. So, you know, we don't own our views, they are going to change all the time. A neighbor next to you can plant a cedar tree that's going to be a hundred feet tall and it's going to block your view completely, it could be right on the fence line and there's nothing you can do about it. We do not have our views in perpetuity. You know, in all neighborhoods, we need density. I would be supporting this even if it wasn't for seniors. And yeah, I think it's a really good project and, you know, it's really thoughtful with the one story going to the back. I understand the concerns and the pains of growing, but townhouses are not the way to go for, for all of our density. They're not good for, for seniors and they're great for young families if the kids want to run up and down the stairs, but it's not great for anybody with disabilities. You know, we've been longing for more apartments along our corridors and, you know, we've got Seafair Apartments right on Francis in my neighborhood, right beside the single-family houses and it's just part of the neighborhood. We've got in Stevston, you've got single-family homes and then the Mariners Village and then the big Fraser Place Apartments right beside that. You know, we need apartments everywhere and it's just the reality. And, and as far as sunlight goes too, I mean, we need to go in bigger cities where there's no sunlight on your place, you need to go for a walk. We can walk to the sunlight and we also don't own the street parking in front of our homes. People can come and park for a couple of hours to visit somebody and leave, that's their right and we do not own the streets in front of our homes. So I do hear their concerns and it's, it's part of the pains of growing. We've got millions of people coming here to B C and, and we're obligated to increase our density and offer bonus densities for reduced parking, offer bonus densities for affordable housing. These are things that we can do to encourage developers to build affordable housing and it's, it's, it's our obligation to, to support projects like this and I think that we all do. So thank you again.
Counselor Al. Yes, worship. First of all, I'd like to thank the speakers tonight, either you support or against it. I think you give us some more things to think about and we can, because of your presentations. So at least I'm speaking for myself, you know, I have to look deeper into the project. Now I hear that there are several objections. First of all is the number of parking. I don't think that's a problem because I, I know that most of the people are not really actively driving at certain age. And the noise, again, you know, we hear that the people would be quiet people and again from experience, that's the case. The problem, street parking could be a problem from, from what has been presented, the overflowing parking might have an impact on the neighborhood, but I understand that staff would be able to address that issue because of regulations. The final point is about the sunlight, the shadowing. I do have some concern about that because, you know, I think this, this map really shows that there's an impact. And, and I know that sunlight and I think people would agree that sunlight is very important for health or for mental health as well. So I want to ask staff a question, is there any way that we can improve on the, I mean, making it better for, for the, for the neighbors?
Yes, through your worship to Counselor, Counselor Al. I mean, the, the building has been designed to try and reduce the shadowy impacts, really by trying to, to locate the primary massing of the building along railway and, and introduce that or increase that separation between the building and the adjacent neighbors. Further, there is the screening we talked about on the, on the balcony and, and against the fence that will, that will grow and provide more of a barrier, excuse me. And through the development permit process, staff will look further at all of these details to see if there are any further refinements that could add to those, those efforts.
Well, may I ask that, will the screening actually be a problem further, you know, making it, the, the shadowing even worse or do you think there's no impact? Okay, good, thank you.
All right, just hang on. All right, with that, we're going to call the question on the OCP bylaw. All those in favor? Those opposed? It is carried and on second and third. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Counselor McNulty?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just a request, a number of issues were brought up tonight and I wish to the developer and to the staff, especially in the homes directly behind them, I think we're all saying, if you just pay particular attention to them and see if we can mitigate some of the issues that are there. I think we have formal requests for mitigation, especially like the emissions that were brought up, you could put up an emissions wall, et cetera, et cetera, in the parking, there, there are a number of things that can be done. So if staff could take that in advisement?
Yeah, I'd take it through the DPP process.
By advice on a PP and maybe communicate with some of the residents on Calder to let you know what, what, what changes have been made. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that, that concludes that item. Mr. Clerk, the last item.
Thank you, worship. Item number four is Richmond zoning bylaw.
Keep going.
Richmond zoning bylaw eighty-five hundred, amendment by law one zero four six three, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Location citywide applicant is city Richmond, is the purpose to amend the city's zoning bylaw eighty-five hundred that would introduce electric vehicle charging infrastructure requirements for non-residential parking spaces in new development. Proposed amendment with set minimum EV-ready charging requirements for employee, customer, residential visitor and unclassified parking spaces, as well as accessible hotel guests and shared vehicle parking spaces. The intent of the proposed amendment bylaw is to increase access to workplace charging opportunities and on-the-go opportunity charging in new office, retail, restaurant, entertainment, leisure and institutional uses. First reading was July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, Richmond is the applicant. Did you want to say anything about it, Mr. Craig?
Nothing to add, your worship. We're happy to answer your question.
Okay, any written submissions?
None, your worship.
Anyone want to talk to us about this? Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion, all those in favor post carried and. And moved and seconded, all those in favor post carried. Thank you, we are now adjourned.